Open and entertain a motion on the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda. With the Alicia eight C.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica for the approval of today's agenda with one modification that is a removal of item eight C, a resolution to sell a vacant residential lot at Fifteen Grove to adjacent property owner at Seventeen Grove. Chair offer support? Questions, comments, dissent? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Councilwoman Shafi? Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries moving on to item four, the approval of the proposed minutes in person and virtual workshop meeting minutes for June third, twenty twenty four, as well as the in-person and virtual regular meeting minutes for June third, twenty twenty four. City Council, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the minutes for in-person and virtual workshop meeting, June third, two thousand and twenty four.
Chair offers a second. Do we have questions, concerns, dissent? Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call to roll on the approval of the workshop minutes for June third?
Councilwoman Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries on to in-person and virtual regular meeting minutes for June third, twenty twenty four.
I move to approve the in-person and virtual regular meeting minutes for June third, two thousand and twenty four.
Chair offer support? Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call to roll?
Councilwoman Shafi? Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries moving on to the section of our agenda that is set aside for us to communicate with the mayor, so forgive me, but a mayor to come and communicate with city council and the rest of the public. Madam Mayor, are you online?
I'm here. Good afternoon, Council. Good afternoon, citizens of Highland Park. I don't want to be before you long. I wanted to take time out just to acknowledge our Wayne County Executive who came and met with me today on a town hall panel and discussed, we discussed collaborations for community and economic development, which we have already started moving towards. And he was in total agreement that that's what the city needs is to make sure that we are working together to get the community and economic development pieces put in place. So I want to thank him for that. I want to thank the citizen that came out and walked with me on Saturday morning in the southwest district, part of District Three, and discussed the MLK Park. And they're putting together MLK Block Club. So if you live in the southwest side of District Three, which was from Tuxedo down to, we walked down to Highland, and you're interested in becoming a part of the Block Club, they're going to be calling it MLK Park Block Club. Get with Shannon, a lot of you know him. He's also putting together a cleanup coming up, I believe this week, Friday. I want to make sure, I want to make sure I have that. So if anybody's interested in helping with the cleanup in that area, please let them know. I think that's all I have right now. But I appreciate your time and everyone stay cool. Please, we have a cooling center located at the Highland Park Fire Department. From, it's open from nine to five P M. Please take advantage of it if you are, don't have air units in your house and you need to get cool, please go up there. The fire department is willing to greet you and work with you. So don't hesitate. The Highland Park Police Department is riding around passing out water to those who might be in need. So please take advantage of these things so that you can stay cool. Don't forget to hydrate, don't forget to stay, keep with cool clothing, cottons, linens, and do not overdress because this heat is going to get hotter as the week goes on. And we want to make sure that you're safe. You guys have a blessed day and I'll talk to you soon.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this is the time where we open up the floor to citizens for citizens' participation. Citizen may speak for no more than two minutes on any item which appears on the agenda. If there's a citizen that would like to come up and talk to us about the first ordinance reading about a tabled item for the property sale, the approval of a fireworks license application, the section under community development, where there lists properties for sale. There's also the Finance Department Resolution to amend the operating budget as presented by the Finance Department. Resolution to approve the proposed budget for July one, twenty twenty four to June third, twenty twenty five is on there. And also the Treasurer's Office, it's a resolution to approve a three-year assessment contract with WCA assessing our current accessory. If there's anyone would like to come to the podium and speak on those items for two minutes, they can do so or we can move right into the agenda. Floor is always open.
Good evening, Council, employees, guests, citizens of Highland Park. I want to comment on item eight B, the lot that is to be sold to Matthew Lopez. I'm here at Brandon Lopez, I live on Cortland. Matthew Lopez is my brother. We own the adjacent house jointly as individuals. I looked up the discrepancy and why it only says his name. The city recorded it about eight years ago with only his name, even though we both owned it jointly the entire time. County records support this. City, the title supports this, the quitclaim deed supports this. So I just wanted to clear that up. So you would be selling it to both me and my brother, who both own that house jointly as individuals. And I just want to take the time to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to participate in the offer to purchase program. The last time we participated, we acquired a lot next to another house that we own. And we have started cleanup on that. We've eliminated brush and large trees. We've eliminated about a hundred gallons worth of emptied glass that has showed up near, from the nearby gas station and other facilities. And so we're very happy to be able to participate and make the community better. We are in contact with the owner of the adjacent lots of that, so we can get our fencing permit started. And we are happy to do that same thing for this lot, where we have been finding large animals, opossums, cats, and trash as well. So I'm, I'm here on representation for my brother and myself. He couldn't make it, he's coming back on a plane right now from a funeral over the weekend across the country. But I welcome any questions that you may have for me in the agenda item itself. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, one second, let me get you started. All right.
Hey, so my name is Brian Donovan. And, you know, I want to thank everybody for their work. I know that it's just a lot of work and it is taxing work to do. And I really hope that we can overcome some of the conflicts and, and really come together in H P. That said, I want to comment on the amendments to the budget. So the charter is very clear that the Department of Finance, one of their jobs, number four in section seven, eight, is to supervise the dispersment of all monies and assets by the city and exercise continuous budget control to ensure that appropriations are not exceeded. And we are basically amending the overspend of one point eight million dollars or being requested to do that today. That, there's only two weeks left in the year. So even if some of that money is not yet spent, most of that money has to be spent. And I want to also add, related to that, that it's a duty of the mayor in section seven point three to keep the city council fully advised at all times as to the financial conditions and needs of the city. So if that money needed to be spent, it should not wait until the last meeting of the year to authorize that expenditure, which is what is happening today. Thank you.
Thank you. For the people that are online, you're going to have to raise your hand. The attendees that are online, if you want to be heard, you're going to have to raise your hand digitally. So there are about nine of you on here. How you doing, Ms. Frye? Go ahead.
All right. The ordinance, can you explain the number five there? The associated payment in lieu of taxes, the pilot, can that be explained as well as? Yes, I'll stick with that, the ordinance, can that be explained? And also the resolution to approve three-year assessment contract with WCA. What is WCA intend that be explained? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, seeing vacancy at the podium, that lets me know that, wait, I don't. Individuals that are online, I have ten of you. If there's anybody online that wanted to speak to the agenda items, this is an opportunity for you to do so. I got eleven now. Okay, so hearing, I don't see any hands raised. So I'm going to go ahead and move on into the agenda. We will be moving into item five, that is the ordinance first reading. This is for the tax exempt ordinance for the City of Highland Park Housing Community Limited Dividend Housing Association, Payment in Lieu of Taxes. I'm going to need a member of council to make a motion to open the, to begin the first reading or commence the first reading of the ordinance. That way it can come out on the floor for discussion. No, so this is our, so we have this document, this is the.
I have that, no.
They, no one raise their hand, no ma'am, no one raise their hand at this time. I'm sorry for that. So, so now the floor is open for us to move into item five. I just need someone to make a motion for us to commence the first reading.
I move to start the first reading of ordinance for tax exemption ordinance for the Highland Park Housing Community Limited Dividend Housing Association, Payment in Lieu of Taxes.
Chair will offer, chair will offer support for commencing the reading of, the first reading of the ordinance. Madam Clerk, would you please call to roll on beginning discussion on, or beginning the first reading of this ordinance?
Councilwoman Shafi? Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson?
No.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, this item is on the floor. And before we get started here, I don't know if everyone has a copy of this resolution to approve the Highland Park Community Limited Dividend Housing Association, L L C, Payment in Lieu of Taxes. This is a tax exemption ordinance. This ordinance will be created to build a structure to allow a partner to come into the city and help us manage our current inventory of HUD property. And I believe, I don't want to forget your last name, sir, I see you back there. Mr. Fox? Mr. Fox, Mr. Fox, trying to remember that. Mr. Fox is also here to take a look at this document. And I just wanted to, before we get the discussion started, I'm going to make my brief comment and shut up. Under section nine of this ordinance, there's a section that I'd like to read out loud to the citizens in the audience. This ordinance shall remain in effect and shall not terminate as long as the housing project shall remain subject to income and use restrictions under section forty-two of the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. And the mortgage loan remains outstanding and unpaid, provided however that the duration of the exemption shall not exceed fifty years. The way that I interpreted that statement is that this property, that these properties that they're talking about are going to remain low-income housing to qualify for this financial framework. And as I looked at this, I thought, what would my neighbor down the street ask about us creating this partnership? Where we have our city-owned property that used to be, that is a part of HUD, managed by an outside entity, what would my greatest fear be? And I guess the greatest fear would be that this partnership would dissolve the low-income housing status of those units. And so I wanted to read that under the ordinance, section nine, the duration, basically for the full term of the loan, am I correct, Mr. Fox? It'll stay, it'll stay low-income housing for around fifty years. And so that was, when I come to this room, I asked, what would ten people do, myself and nine other people on my block? And so when I talk about things, it's not necessarily what I would think, it's what all ten of us would think. And so when asking people about something like this, that was one of the concerns they had. If it's going to be a low-income housing benefit for the developer, how long will it be low-income housing? And the answer to that question, Mr. Fox concurred, it's around fifty years of the whole term of the loan. I don't have any other statements about it. I have looked at this document, I read it the first time, and I'm comfortable, I would love to turn the floor over to the other members of the city council. So if there was something nagging at them about this ordinance or that they wanted to have a modification made, they could address that and we could start going through this thing and drawing some lines through or some circles around. Otherwise, consider this the first reading had, but I would like to hear some dialogue on this item if those individuals have questions. Yes, sir. You want the whole thing read, I can read it. Okay. Resolution to approve the Highland Park Housing Community Limited Dividend Housing Association, L L C, Payment in Lieu of Taxes Pilot, Tax Exemption Ordinance First Reading. Whereas the City of Highland Park Housing Commission, otherwise known as H P H C, in partnership with M H T Housing, has formed the Highland Park Housing Community Limited Dividend Housing Association, L L C, to redevelop eight existing scattered site buildings, which include a hundred and sixty units in the City of Highland Park. The project resulted in a substantial rehabilitation of one hundred one-bedroom apartments, nineteen one-bedroom townhomes and forty-one two-bedroom townhomes. Whereas a transaction is an important component of H P H C's plan to convert public housing units under HUD's Streamline Voluntary Conservation Program. I'm sorry, conversion program. The conversion will allow the properties to receive over seventy thousand dollars per unit of needed repairs and ensure that residents receive deeply subsidized rents for years to come. And no existing residence will be permanently displaced because of rehabilitation. And residents will not experience a rent increase. Whereas a construction loan in the amount of eighteen million, three hundred eighty thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars and a permanent loan in the amount of seven million, four hundred ninety-three thousand and nine dollars will be provided by the state, by the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, otherwise known as M I S T A. The Richmond Group, Inc., will make capital contributions of thirteen million, one hundred ten thousand, two hundred ninety-four dollars, which includes the purchase of low-income housing tax credits. Additionally, the H P H C is providing a loan in the amount of thirteen million, nine hundred thousand and a deferred developer fee in the amount of four hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred fifty-three dollars. Whereas rents for all units have been set at or below sixty percent of the area median income. Adjustment for family size, all one hundred and sixty units will be subject to the pilot based on section fifteen A of the State Housing Development Authority Act of nineteen sixty-six as amended. Whereas in order to make this endeavor economically viable, it's necessary for it to receive, I mean, to receive, for it to revive the benefits of tax exemption under section fifteen A of the State Housing Development Authority Act nineteen, of nineteen ninety-six, P A, three, four, six as amended, M C L one twenty-five point one four, one, five, A. Whereas adoption of the counsel of this pilot ordinance and the establishment of a service charge of five percent of the net shelter rent received will satisfy the requirements of the above-mentioned public act. Now therefore be a resolve that the city council, through its first reading only, approves the above reference ordinance. At this point, we will be approving the first reference ordinance by majority, this will be certified by the city clerk and verified by the law department. Additional, Honorable City Council, Highland Park Housing Community Limited Dividend Housing Association, L L C, Payment in Lieu of Taxes. The Highland Park Housing Commission in partnership with M T H has formed the Highland Park Community. I'm sorry, this is a repeat. So that is a repeat of the ordinance. Council, council likely to read every line out of here?
No, 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 Council President, I just want the ordinance read, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely, this is under, the ordinance has not been numbered yet, it's a tax exempt ordinance. It has a space for a blank date, the ordinance to provide for the service charge in lieu of taxes for housing projects for low-income persons and families to be financed with a federally aided or authority-aided mortgage loan or an advance or grant from the authority pursuant to the provisions of the State Housing Development Authority Act of nineteen sixty-six, nineteen sixty-six, P A, three, forty-six as amended, M C L one twenty-five point one four oh one, known here as the Act. City of Highland Park ordains, under section one, the ordinance shall be known and cited as the City of Highland Park Tax Exemption Ordinance, H P H C redevelopment. Under section two, this acknowledges that it is a proper public purpose of the State of Michigan as political subdivision to provide housing for its low-income persons and families to encourage the development of such housing by providing for a service charge in lieu of property taxes in accordance with the Act. The city is authorized by this act to establish or charge, or change the service charge to be paid in lieu of taxes by any or all classes of housing exempt from taxation under this act at any amount it chooses. Not to exceed the taxes would be paid but for this act. It is further acknowledged that such housing for persons or families of low income is a public necessity. And acknowledged that such housing, and I'm sorry, and as the city would be, would be benefited and improved by such housing, their encouragement of the same by providing real estate tax exemption for such housing is a valid public purpose. It is further acknowledged that the continuance of the provisions of this ordinance for tax exemption and the service charge in lieu of all ad verum property taxes during the period contemplated in this ordinance are essential to the determination of economic feasibility of the housing projects that are constructed or rehabilitated with finance extended in reliance of such tax exemptions. More, sir? That's sufficient? For those who are in the audience, the additional items here on the ordinance list the exact properties that they specified for our last meeting. It lists them as lot number. It lists them as they're recorded in the plat map. It's a long, thorough explanation of those parcels that are identified in legal terms for the assessment. Additional questions, comments, concerns for my members of council? As I said before at the beginning, I read this from section nine, which talked about the length, Mr. Shafi, go right ahead.
Okay, so, so, um, Council President, what I didn't get it the last time, and I understand that this is the boss is here. I, I didn't get the understanding as to if you have taxes, what do we want to leave in, in, in property taxes? What do we give you in lieu of property taxes? And then, and, and then on top of that, I'm wondering, does that exemption extend over to the water? Does it exemption extend over into their, their income taxes that they have to pay the city? How far does this extend? Does this particular exemption?
I believe it pertains to property taxes specific. Mr. Fox, can I call you up to offer some context, please? Am I correct in assuming that this is only the investment that you're making? The capital investment that you're making in investing in the city? You're making that in lieu of taxes?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilman, the question, if I understood correctly, currently there is no tax. We have provided the binders to confirm that approximately without looking, that there will be now ninety thousand dollars a year in tax. Nowhere are we admitted, omitted from paying the water, sewer, gas, electric. Nowhere are we omitted from paying any other special assessments that may or may not come. This is strictly the payment in lieu of tax. There's no other, no other request, nor will there be.
So what is the payment again, I'm sorry?
In the information that has been provided, the most conservative underwriting to the proposed projections, recognizing that the same has been shared with the Attorney General's Office, M I S T A, and HUD. The, gosh, I need my glasses here. The minimum amount will be approximately eighty-eight thousand dollars a year. Starting at eighty-eight and then escalating up from there. That was in tab eight of the binder and highlighted.
Looking at these numbers here, we got, we got seven thousand on one line per unit of development. There's another thirteen in here on another line. Then we got thirteen things with that three thousand. And there is, um, developer fee for four hundred and forty-eight thousand. That's a lot of money. And I'm just, what I'm concerned about is what the city may be losing and giving up as a result of, of this particular exemption. This is the first time I've ever heard one point like this.
So.
To be honest with you, this is the first time I've ever heard something.
Mr. Fox, those numbers that Mr. Shafi just referenced, those are burdens, financial burdens that your organization is going to take, not the city, right?
Correct.
So that, so the city's not on the hook for any of that.
Oh, no, 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 I didn't make that assumption, Council President.
No, I was just clarifying.
I was just curious, just the one year we're giving up in lieu of eight thousand dollars a year that we're going to gain. Okay, if somebody could, could answer that, what you know what I'm saying? That would help me out, my decision. You know, I understand as to what they're giving, but it's in lieu of the taxes that wouldn't be paid. So my question is, what is the possibility of what we're losing in taxes? And does it balance itself out? So you know, are we losing greater in taxes just to get this development? Or is that development neck and neck with the property taxes that we're going to be losing? Just say what it means. That's my million-dollar question, okay?
Council President? I, I can, I can answer that question.
Go right ahead, ma'am.
The properties in question had, were HUD properties. And HUD as a government entity was not paying taxes at all. So we had, we had no tax money coming in. So what we're gaining is eighty thousand dollars, not losing any money because we do as not, not receiving any from the HUD, uh, uh, buildings. So now we're going to gain eighty thousand dollars more a year in tax money that we did not have.
That's what I wanted to hear, I didn't know if HUD had ever paid, paid property taxes or not, you know what I'm saying? So I'm glad you answered that, funny, Madam Mayor, I really appreciate you.
Uh, additional questions before I call for the vote? Yes, ma'am, please. Yes, ma'am, so it says, whereas the adoption of city council of this pilot ordinance and the establishment of the service charge of five percent of the net shelter rent received will satisfy the requirements of the above-mentioned public act. Now therefore be a resolve that the city council, through its first reading only, approves the above-reference ordinance. So this is only approval at the first reading, am I correct, Mr. Boss?
Yes.
Okay. So now between now and members have this document. If something does not sit well with you between now and the next time that this comes up to us, we can go through this with the legal department, we can do some line items, we can get back with Mr. Fox or with council, I'm sorry, with C D Director Clyburn and have those, those items addressed. But the second time we see this document, we'll be voting to make it an actual order. So right now, we're just voting on the approval of what we've seen and heard right now. The next time, if there are no additional questions, it could just be a simple cursory, bring it up on the floor and approve it, depending on how council proceeds. So I'm ready to call for the vote? No, maybe not? Okay, so then we're.
So I was on the same page with Councilman Shafi.
Okay.
So thank you, Mayor, for answering that question in regards to what do we receive? So here's my issue. So here's my issue. And it's just the issue altogether, period. We have a lot of people in our city who are not paying their taxes, their property taxes, and I'm talking about business, land, et cetera. And it just seems, the years to me seems a lot. And so I'm wondering how many other businesses or, uh, properties we are still holding exempt. And so if we're holding all these people exempt, we're never, they're giving us a one-time, and, and, and so if that's not right, unless you're giving us eighty thousand every year? Are you giving us eighty thousand every year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so unless we're getting and going to receive that money and we have not been getting those money, it makes it very difficult to say I want to give somebody else a, a tax exemption or a tax exemption for so long. Excuse me, I'm just trying to pull something back. And so when I read that and read the act, the State Housing Development Authority Act nineteen sixty-six, correct?
Correct.
It says, "An act to create a state housing development authority." That authority in this case would be?
That authority is referencing Mishta as the state agency.
Okay, "to define the powers and duties of the authority to establish a housing development revolving fund." We have a revolving?
I'm not.
No, I'm just, you know, I'm gonna keep going. "To establish a land acquisition and develop fund, to establish a rehabilitation fund, to establish a conversion, condominium fund, to create certain other funds and provide, provide for the expenditure of certain funds, to authorize the making and purchase of loans, deferred payment loans, and grants to qualified developers, sponsors, individuals, mortgage lenders, and municipalities, to establish and provide acceleration and foreclosure procedures, to provide tax exemption, to authorize payments instead of taxes by non-private housing corporation, consumer housing corporations, limited dividend housing corporations, mobile home park corporations, and mobile home park association, and to prescribe criminal penalties for violation of this act." We pull this act only for the purpose of tax exemption?
Yes, ma'am. That is part of Public Act three forty-six, recognized by the state to set up a limited dividend housing association to recognize the proper guidance and underwriting requested by both HUD and Mishta to recognize section forty-two of the IRS code to help complement the affordable housing. In this situation, we're going to be recognized affordable for perpetuity, recognizing we're going to be able to maintain the incomes who are either at zero to thirteen thousand per household. And that public act that you just read off there is appropriate and the only guidance.
Are we mute? I'm sorry, forgive me. We're getting some feedback online.
I, I hear you, and, and every time we talk, I feel like you're giving me a scripted answer.
No, ma'am.
No, 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 just, just hear me out. I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying that's how I feel about it instead of just talking. And so when you mentioned HUD and then somebody else say, "We don't have HUD," that, that draws a flag. It's like, I was HUD in this and we don't have HUD. Then the other part is, we do not have, and if I'm wrong, please someone tell me,
In the city.
So, and forgive me for not being that in tune to what this means or what that means. But now, just listening to, if I was you talking to me and you told me you already all X, Y, and Z, and all of them are already exempt, I would give you a whole bunch of other ones, they gonna be exempt. We didn't exempt the city. I mean, I know we have all this other industrial stuff, but let's be reasonable.
At least a quarter of the city. At least a quarter.
You know what I'm saying? So, not trying to be mean, not trying to be harsh, I'm being illogically. I cannot exempt every single property. You know, I can't tell you, I don't know anybody is gonna exempt all of their properties.
So.
So let me jump.
I appreciate.
Before you start, Mr. Fox. Uh, but just before you start, Mr. Fox. Uh, we're gonna have an additional workshop on this.
Thank you.
Absolutely, we're gonna have an additional workshop on this because I realize now, listening to my colleagues talk, the disconnect is in the information that they have available that makes it make sense. Because at the, at present, it doesn't make sense to them. And, and I know from your perspective, I only know just a little bit. I know from your perspective, you're doing low income housing and you know that you'll never be able to recruit what you invest as far as capital into low income housing and make it balance out without tax credits. And I, so that, so what I find there is that I learned that information painfully, it took a long time, so I don't think it's fair that we don't take time to get these questions answered from our colleagues. It may, it may take a lot of, um, laying data out to, to, to allay their concerns and their fears. And to Ms. Manica's point, I think if you could attempt right now to give a proper framework to why would a community, why would, why is it a good idea for a community to make an arrangement where you are tax exempt in lieu of whatever investment that you're making? If you could just put it in plain English for us, and then we could, I would love to have you come back for a workshop before we get to the second reading of this. So if you could just explain it to us, um, how, how this is beneficial to our community. That's what we're all looking for. I think we're all looking for the benefit because right now, like to Ms. Manica's point, it's we, we've been giving away so much. I don't know if they'll ever pay taxes on Ford Field, just being honest. It's there. I don't know if they'll ever pay taxes on it because it's been, it's tax exempt. Has an incentive to bring them into the city. So if you could just explain it in normal language, I think that would go a long way.
Great. If I could get that, uh, meeting invite, I'm happy to refresh, put it in reverse. I'm happy to talk about the annual median income of residents that we serve, the affordability, the duration. I'm happy to talk about the state housing tax exempt loan. I'm happy to talk about all of our sources and uses, and I'm happy again to reiterate, refocus on the pro forma and then all of the expected capital improvements.
Uh, Council President?
Yes, sir.
Is it possible it could be another, another, another workshop?
Uh, I will look at my schedule, probably not the fir-, probably not the first. Well, let me ask you a question, Mr. Fox. A building, your capital stack, do you have any hard dates in front of you that you need to, that you're dealing with?
Thursday of this week, I'm going in front of the state for the bonds, uh, knowing that we have the entirety, um, managed. But, um, I again will be making full effort to, one, maybe offer the tour that's been offered. Two, for you to see the existing conditions. Three, to understand the public-private partnership that HUD is going to be reinstating. Four is to recognize what those benefits are for the Highland Park Housing Commission. Five, to recognize the disappearance of HUD and the reinstatement of MISTHA. Six is to walk you through, um, our existing portfolio that we own within the city to do a tour, to refresh, so you can see what else is gonna be upcoming. Seven is to further recognize how we've been here for over thirty years in the city of Highland Park, and you can hear from our residents firsthand all of the best practices. I'm not certain of that. Yes. Okay.
Okay, Council, in, um, in the desire to, to control, to make the most use of our time right now, I would like to call the role on this item, this first reading, and I am confirming that we will have a workshop in the month of July to, to additionally discuss this. But due to the second time and the heat index, I wanna go ahead and we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica for the approval of the first reading, it was supported by the chair, sorry. We opened the first reading at the recommendation of Ms. Manica. That first reading was supported by the chair. After some discussion, we have an opportunity today as a final line of this, now therefore be a resolve that the city of Highland Park through its first reading only approves the above referenced ordinance. The chair is willing to entertain a motion of any kind from members of the city council on item five. We, we, we voted to bring it out for discussion. Well, through this first reading only, that means only today. If we come back next time and say it don't work, that only, that doesn't mean we have to do it. Okay. Now therefore be a resolve that the city of Highland Park through its first reading only, we have to have two readings. So that's approved.
Because if you say only, if they say approves the above order, there's no need for second.
Mr. Fox, could you confirm, please?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I think, uh, first reading only does provide clarification and that it does show that the ordinance is not being approved because it's not being approved. Only the first reading is being approved. There's an additional step that has to occur, and that would be a second reading and then approval by council. So I think that having the only in there does provide, uh, clarification that is helpful based on the way I read it.
It approves what?
First reading only.
No, it says approves the above reference.
Ordinance. Through first read, through only the first reading, not through a, uh, not to be misinterpreted as a final reading or a second reading.
The final will appear when it's final, right?
Yes, yeah, after the second, if there's a second reading approved, then at that point it would become effective.
Floor is yours, Councilman, I have a fire.
Uh, this is the way I read it. If I, you're telling me, the lawyer's telling me about the red, this does not approve the order.
Correct.
Exactly what you said.
Precisely.
Okay, now we need a motion to approve the first reading only of the above referenced ordinance. I have a motion on the floor to approve the first reading of the, first reading and a review that we had of the ordinance. We have a second. Ms. Manica offers a second. Madam Deputy Kirk, would you please call the role on item five?
Councilwoman Shafi. Councilwoman Manica. Council Pro Tim Robinson. Council President Thomas.
Yes, for first reading only. Motion carries. The item will come back to us first in the workshop before we have the second reading, and then we'll proceed after that.
Thank you. And I look forward to be following up with everybody, and we'll, we'll be ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Moving on to item six, this is a tabled item, resolution to approve the sale of a commercial lot and structure located at one zero, I'm sorry, one two zero one one Hamilton to Bobby D. Lewis, senior, on behalf of his entity to be named later for the price of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This item is tabled. City Council, what is your pleasure on item six?
Yeah, so, um, so, Council President, I want to make a motion to bring this back from.
So we have a motion on the floor to bring the tabled item six back to the table. Do we have support?
Support.
Councilwoman Manica has offered support. This is a vote to bring tabled item six, a resolution to approve the sale of commercial lot and structure located at one two zero one one Hamilton to Bobby D. Lewis, senior. Um, Madam Deputy Kirk, would you please call the role?
Councilwoman Shafi.
Yes, to bring it back from.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
No.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, item is on the floor. City Council, this is item open for discussion after a motion.
Uh, Council President, if I may reiterate correctly, we did discuss at the last council meeting that this item would remain tabled until they can give us a proper appraisal of the value of this particular piece of property because most of the council members agreed that seventy-five hundred dollars is extremely low for them to get the property sitting in Hamilton, which is the caucus club. Uh, we've had, uh, we've had a few uh, realtors actually look at the outside of the building and they're telling us that we need to get it at least thirty to forty thousand dollars for that building to be shaped as it is now. So I would like to do what we asked them to do, and that is bring us a proper appraisal.
I'm just getting confirmation. Ms. Al Shafi, you are in fact correct.
Yeah.
But the clerk just informed me to, that the, the idea is to continue to put it back off the table, that we can't have an item tabled in perpetuity. We have to take some sort of action. I see Director Claburn has come to the podium, Mr., uh, Director Claburn, now mind you, we don't have a motion on the floor.
Oh, so.
We don't have a motion on the floor. So the question among city council is, but don't go away, we definitely gonna need you. So the, so the item has been removed from the table. I'm sorry, it's, it has, the tabled item has been brought to the floor. We, we don't have an action on it, but Mrs. Al Shafi's comment is correct. He did ask for an assessment on that, so.
So, uh, so, so President, I would like to make a motion, uh, to retable this item until we can get the appraisal uh, at the next council. We can roll back in the next council, but I think I hope you can retable this until we can get that appraisal.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Al Shafi to take the tabled item, a resolution to approve the sale of commercial lot and structure located at one two zero one one Hamilton to Bobby D. Lewis to table this item until a appraisal can be provided at, at, at the next council meeting or at a subsequent council meeting. I don't know if they can, to get an appraisal, we gotta get an appointment and they have to get out there, so we can't guarantee they'll be out there too. Uh, so, um, do we have support for that motion?
Support.
I'm sorry?
Support.
Thank you, ma'am. The motion was made to retable this out, item from Mr. Al Shafi. It's been supported by Councilwoman Manica. I don't see any hands, no questions, concerns, dissent. Would you please call the role on retabling item six?
Councilwoman Shafi.
Yes, it is.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson. Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. The item will be retable and at uh, Director Claburn, if you could, uh, throw us a bone, appreciate that. Uh, moving on to item seven under the city clerk, approval of the fireworks license application by Yellow Box Fireworks LLC.
I move to approve the Yellow Box Firework LLC.
I would offer support with questions. So we have this item on the floor, and sir, um, you are Yellow Box Fireworks LLC, you are the proprietor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, my questions are as follow. I've lived here for twenty-four years.
Yes, sir.
Every Fourth of July, a house burns in Highland Park. That's at least twenty-four.
Yes, sir.
There's two on my block. I'm gonna say it again. Every year, a house burns in Highland Park for fireworks. Somewhere between June twenty-fifth and July fifteenth, a house burns for fireworks in Highland Park. I've been, like I said, I've been here for twenty-four years and no less than twenty-four houses being, that were burnt for fireworks. Do you talk to the people that you sell fireworks to about how they use? Do you, are, are there any signs at your business that admonish, like when you get on an airplane, they show you how to do the, the gas mask and how to put your seatbelt on? When you, when you charge your battery, there's a little thing that says, don't do this. You jack your car up, there's a little insert that shows not to put your hands under the tire because an accident may happen. And so I'm wondering as a proprietor of fireworks, if you are proactively, as you sell pyrotechnic explosive devices into, in our community, are you providing any type of safeguards to the people that you're providing it to or admonishing them in any way with any educational material that would remind them that these things are dangerous and suggest that they represent a fire hazard?
Yes, sir. I would, I would, um, I guess start with your last comment, they are dangerous. Uh, we tell people that they are dangerous as dangerous is the match that they light them with. Uh, we're very cognizant of what happens. Uh, we issue a handout to all of the consumers at Fireworks. It's published by the American Pyrotechnic Association, a educational association that we've been part of for well over a decade. Um, and we hand that out to all the consumers, the people who work at our stand, and we've been at this location, I believe, for twelve years. Uh, we explain how the devices are used. Also, people can use their phones on a code, through our code, and there's instruction there. There's also instruction on the device itself, on how to use the devices. All these devices have been approved by the Consumer Protection Agency. In the first instance, just to get them imported from China. Uh, we buy from a company called Brothers Pyrotechnic, and they are ranked one of the top providers of fireworks in the world. So I believe our longevity here on, on the same location demonstrates that we always have the same concern that you raised, and we go to extreme lengths to educate those who are buying fireworks. We don't sell to minors, uh, we sell to adults. We ask for ID. So I, I believe that we take the necessary steps. We also carry a ten million dollar liability policy. We also carry a million, two million dollars for property damage. If anything does happen and it's related to anything that we've done wrong.
I have one more question for you.
Yes, sir.
It's Mr., uh.
Horvath.
Horvath, okay, sir. So, Mr. Horvath, I wanna, um, I wanna create an image for you. Uh, you have a successful season. You sell everything. No incidents. There's no fires. Nobody gets hurt. However, on July sixth, Curbside in Highland Park looks like a war zone. Because after those fireworks are used, they littered a community. You would think somebody had just put explosive shells all over. There's not a corner of the city that is not littered with pyrotechnic casings. You can smell the cordite in the air. Okay? Uh, as a vendor in our community, selling a product that is disposable, I would ask that you, should you have this approved, be aggressively proactive about how these things are disposed of, meaning to the people that you, I would like to see, if I could imagine, a gigantic sign that says, do not litter with used fireworks. Please bag and trash. Yes, please, something to that effect because this country is founded on capitalism. People want fireworks. They absolutely do, whether I like them or not. One of the problems with this product is that it really, it is, it's dangerous. Yeah, we have a lot of vets here, we have a lot of pets here. It's, it's challenging, so we are balancing. Those people cannot take the sound, those people, those animals who don't like it, those people who don't wanna clean it up, we're balancing. We're balancing our comfort versus the desire of the people who really enjoy fireworks. Now, a lot of us really, really enjoy fireworks. A lot of people, let me say that. But on the other side, there are also people who, the process of to bear witness to our neighbors' enjoyment of fireworks, we have to worry about fire hazard. We have to worry about the noise, the smell, and most importantly, the most, probably the most egregious is the trash. Because long after the event is over, those things litter the street. So those could be addressed. I think, I, as a citizen who lives here, I would greatly appreciate that because that's what makes it uncomfortable. Those things, the fire hazard, the waste, the smell, the trash, all of those things, so.
Yes, well, I, I will say this. I will address it. We will put up signs at the stand this year regarding litter. We will also, uh, create a handout to give to the consumers on every purchase, um, highlighting the fact that there is a concern in the city, um, disposal. Uh, I would also say that it's a, it's a two-day event. People aren't supposed to be lighting off fireworks, other than as the state law says, and I know what you're gonna say, they do it. Uh, but we, we emphasize that in our handout. I'd be more than glad to provide you with that handout before we start.
Yeah, I mean, I know what you're saying. I grew up in an era where you didn't have to wear a seatbelt, so it took about four years, and I have friends that have accidents. It took about four years of them coming on television, every day saying, click it or ticket. And then I finally started to wear a seatbelt because it was, that, it was reinforcement. So I'm sure if you tell a hundred people, hey, when you get finished with these, put them in the trash, you might get fifteen people, but if you don't tell anybody, if you don't tell anybody, nobody is likely to do it. That would be a huge help because it leaves a scar.
It's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
Very good suggestion. I'm, I'll, I'll take care of that. I'll send you an example, and we will do our best to make sure that happens um, to the best of our ability.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, we're here, we, we have the same concern. We don't want it to happen. I know that they litter in the parking lot and store supermarket. We pick up everything, we sweep it clean. So we've taken care of that over a decade.
Okay.
There's no issues there, but I, I hear you, and I will address it.
Thank you very much. So, I mean, the floor is open for other members of council on this, this item. My questions have been answered. Anyone? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the role on item seven, the approval of the fireworks license application from Yellow Box Firework LLC. Madam Deputy Kirk, would you please call the role?
Councilwoman Shafi.
It's the American Holiday Service.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
No.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Hope we have a safe season, sir.
Uh, where would you like me to either fax or email the literature that we've just discussed?
Would you be kind enough to send it to the clerk's office?
Yes, I will.
Have it delivered, and that way it can be disseminated out to all of us?
You're happy before we settle.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, moving on to community development, item eight, we have two items, A and B. The first is a resolution to sell the vacant residential lot at eighty-two Avalon to the Avalon Village Incorporated, Michigan Nonprofit Corporation for five hundred dollars. City Council, what's your pleasure?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you want Google Maps or LandGrid? Okay. Coming up. I'm also gonna work on our regrid for it. Why are you taking this? To Google, I have to, I regrid, I have to log in. So this is the street view of it. It's near the corner, near Second Avenue. It's that, that, that red dot. It's the vacant lot. Now, I'm trying to get into regrid because it'll show, the regrid will show me who the next door neighbor is. I just can't log into it. Just give me a second. I don't know what's going on with their system. Forgive me, folks, technology is moving real slow today. Ms. Manica, this is the regrid map showing eighty-two Avalon. All right, this will also tell us Avalon Village, I believe, owns this property here at seventy-eight. So, let me try and, I'm gonna stop the share and see if I can log in. I cannot seem to get it to jump to my map. You had additional questions? The floor is open for that item. Um, we, we don't have any, uh, action on it. No one has made a motion or anything.
So, I was asking you to pull up, so I, I was, I think it seems difficult right now to pull it up. At the same time, I just would like to actually make a motion to table the item to have a workshop with, uh, Ms. Harris, and you guys have Avalon Village. There are a few questions, just to alleviate any difficulty in this being passed. I, I just think it should be, I, I think it should be taken.
So what we're doing on item eight A is you make, someone wants to make a motion to table it?
I'm sorry, I'll make it again. I move to table this item.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica for item eight A to table the resolution to sell the vacant lot, residential lot of eighty-two Avalon to the Avalon Village until we're gonna have a workshop, is that what you're saying?
Yes, I said a workshop.
So, it's looking, um, just one second, let me look at my calendar.
And, it was a workshop, you say in a workshop, I don't think you have, actually. And it was a workshop. We say in a workshop, I don't think you have actual, so workshop.
So in the month of July, we have a meeting on July first and on July fifteenth. So let us go ahead and schedule that. I cannot guarantee two workshops next month, but I think we should go ahead and have a workshop on the first of July. So this item will be tabled until we have an item, a work, a workshop on the first of July and potentially bring this item back by the fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor for this item, item eight A, the resolution to sell the vacant residential lot eighty-two Avalon, Avalon Village to be tabled for a workshop. The proposed workshop is going to be held on July first prior to city council meeting.
Quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Have a workshop and all over it.
No, no, you have to have it as an agenda item on a special meeting to be able to do that.
Okay.
So you could workshop and bring it back. Um, at the meeting, you could put it on the agenda that for that evening.
Okay.
For the regular course of business.
Yeah, so we can have a workshop and then we can go ahead and move it to it.
But you couldn't vote for it in the workshop. It would have to be either a regular meeting or a special meeting.
So then to that point, Mr. Boston's point, Ms. Manica, if we would have that item in the workshop for July first, it would be plausible to have it brought back in the following meeting for vote. Okay. I'll make sure to talk to the clerk and to C D Quyburn. So we have a motion on the floor to table this item made by Councilman Shafi. Was that made by you, ma'am?
Right.
It was made by Councilwoman Manica, supported by Councilman Shafi, to table item eight A. Until we have a workshop which is scheduled for July first and that item could be, would also be included on the July first agenda. Would you go ahead and call the roll on tabling item eight A?
Councilman Shafi.
Yes, to table.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, item is going to be tabled to July first for our next workshop and meeting. Um, again, under item eight, this is A B resolution to sell the vacant residential lot at twenty-two doors to Matthew Lopez for five hundred dollars. City Council, what's your pleasure? Floor is open for item A B. We have a motion on the floor to approve the sale of twenty-two doors to Matthew Lopez. We have a second. We only have a motion, sir. We don't have support.
Saying if there's, if there's no support. You can call it for lack of support.
I got this thing with this timer that I do. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, item A B, guys, for lack of support. Moving on to item nine under finances, the resolution to amend the operating budget as presented by the finance department by Mayor Glenda McDonald for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. City Council, what's your pleasure on item eight A?
Coming to approve the resolution to amend the operating budget as presented by the finance department and Mayor Glenda McDonald fiscal year twenty-three, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four.
Chair of support, we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica for the approval of the resolution to amend the operating budget. Presented by the finance department and the city's mayor for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Ms. Manica offered a motion for support. I'll make my first comment. We are at the end of a fiscal year for a municipal nonprofit, like every other business that has a budget or a family that has a budget. When you get to the end of the year, that budget is often amended to either deal with shortfalls or to find out what to do with the surplus. That's what this, in my interpretation, that is what this resolution for the amended operating budget as is presented by the finance department means. But Carl, if you wouldn't mind giving a more clear definition for those people who are online, I would greatly appreciate it.
Good evening, council. Um, you hit it right on the head. So the, the state budget act requires us to adopt an annual budget. And before the end of the fiscal year and during the fiscal year, to the extent facts and circumstances change, they require you to amend the budget. Uh, the budget act says that you cannot spend a dollar unless it's appropriated. So the biggest reason that this is before you, the biggest reason we wait till the very last meeting of every single year is to ensure that no department is a dollar over budget. Because if so, it's got to be disclosed in the audit report as a violation of the budget act. We're allowed to be over the budget during the year, but at June thirty, the reporting date in our audit report that goes to state, if you're a dollar over at any department, then the auditors will say finance department's over budget, this is over budget, and it wasn't properly appropriated by the governing body. So what you have before you, and again, it's not a whole lot to amend this year. The, the dollars are big, but uh, um, the, the good news is that it nets to zero. Is that, um, the proposed amended budget has an increase in revenues of one point eight million dollars. Sorry, got to get the specs out, get to one point eight eight, one million dollars. And I increased the expense a corresponding amount. So again, the good news is on the income tax side, uh, we're amending the budget up by eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. So last year there was some thought of, I think there was a large business that might uh, be discontinuing. Um, how are, are we going to continue at the high level we had last year, et cetera? The good news is we have, and this budget has significantly exceeded not only our current budget, but last year's actuals as well. Um, our right of way permits, so the activity, the building here, uh, within the city continues to happen. Uh, federal grants, we have our last installment of the ARPA grant. Our court revenues are down about three hundred thousand. That's primarily a result of we don't have officers to write tickets. Uh, so I know our staffing level is increasing, so hopefully that will rebound as well. So we're down about three hundred thousand there. And again, insurance, um, on the expenditure side as well as this reimbursement side, we've had significant number of lawsuits. So our lawsuits unbudgeted totaled more than eight hundred thousand dollars this year, lawsuit settlement. So we had to pay out more than eight hundred thousand of which insurance reimbursed us for five seventy-five of that. So you'll see the eight hundred thousand down in expense and then five seventy-five coming back as well. Um, on the expenditure side, one of the significant things obviously is that lawsuit and then the attorney costs related to fighting those cases. Our general property and liability insurance, again, with all the lawsuits, it's gone up more than forty or fifty percent from last year. So, um, we went from about two seventy um, for a property to like three seventy, three eighty, and then two about the same for general property. So it's, it's a significant increase during last year. So that is, um, you see there ninety thousand, eighty, eighty thousand respectively. So it's a hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase that, that wasn't planned for that. So those are the biggest ones. And again, the, there's thirteen days left in the city's fiscal year. So this isn't a budget to increase spending or anything else. This is more of a housekeeping thing, just to make sure that uh, when our audit report comes out, that we fall within the guidelines of the state budget. And then the only other one you see down there is the grant fund. Again, we are spending, we got a new grant, uh, the F, our annual F C, fiscal distress communities villages grant for two, for a hundred and fifty thousand. So that's a revenue and expense related to that. So that's all that one relates to as well. But it's primarily the general fund and again, that one grants on. Outside of that, there's no other funds we're amending. And again, this literally just revenues equal expenses and it just ensures that when our audit report comes out, we stay compliant with the budget act. So happy to answer any questions.
Floor is open, please, at liberty.
The top section there, you see the first eight lines there says revenues. So I'm increasing revenues by one point eight million. Well, it's already been spent. We're just allocating it between the departments to show that it's offset. So again, these aren't new expenses. This is what's already been incurred. Certainly.
This, this something I'm not proud of. If you already spent, why do we have adjusted budget?
Because in these instances, we've spent more than we, our original budget was. We haven't amended the budget during the year at all.
So you spent this money before council approved you to spend it. Basically.
Yes. Some of it, again, the lawsuit judgments for eight hundred thousand of it, we didn't have a choice and the attorney's costs related to fighting it. So that's a million, it's one of the million of it.
So, so we take out lawsuit judgment, say a hundred thousand now.
Yep.
Turn around and we take out Geo Marco mortgage for that's two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Yep. And then our general property liability insurance is a hundred and seventy thousand. Oh, certainly. Yep.
Those fees were for people, they were fighting the people that were suing us, right?
Yes, yes.
So right, all these frivolous lawsuits that came in, we were forced to fight those and it cost us all this extra money.
Yes, this is over and above what was budgeted.
I see, I see. So that is one way to explain it.
Okay, so that's, so that's one million thirty thousand dollars. If we take those two, basically, you're back. Uh, you have eight hundred over eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
That you spent without council's approval, which I would be a good. I mean, illegal. It's a lawsuit. Those things council approved.
Yes.
Okay. Everything else afterwards, there's eight hundred thousand dollars that was appropriated used, spent without you first coming to this council or permission yourself.
That's correct, yes.
Authorized.
It's just, that's the general operating costs of the city. So when some of it is budgeting, so I have a conservative budget, you know, so if, if IT costs go up ten percent, we have to incur that. And usually, so it's on me to bring them to you more frequently as they're occurring. Uh, historically, what I've done the last three years is just come at this meeting for housekeeping, but I think it would be more beneficial if I came to you quarterly because at that point you could say no, this has to stop or we need to cut somewhere else, that kind of stuff. Uh, but at this point, like I said, this is all been incurred. Um, if, if it's passed, we stay compliant with the budget act. We still have a balanced budget. Um, and I, I believe we're going to come in a little better than break even again this year, which is outstanding. Again, despite, you know, the lawsuits and the property tax, the property liability insurance increases, those kind of things, uh, which are beyond our control. But, um, like I say, this, the purpose of this is, is to recognize what has happened and to adjust our budget accordingly. So if this is not passed, then what happens is we, you know, in our audit report, it'll show that, you know, we'll have these half dozen or more departments that are over budget.
Tax support went up by forty thousand dollars. Don't care went up by ten thousand dollars. Hospitalization went up by twenty-five thousand dollars. Consulting service went up by fifteen thousand dollars. Consulting services inspections went up by sixty-five thousand dollars. Consulting service, Metro Consulting, you guys went up a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Now, these actual increases or this is just what was, so they budgeted out X amount of dollars for the year?
Yes.
And this is just a book. I'm asking the question, were these, these were increases or this was over the budget that was proposed?
This is over the budget that is currently in place.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
So these are all over. Metro Consulting.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Manica.
By a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Salaries are up by five thousand dollars. Insurance property has gone up by ninety thousand dollars. Insurance general liability is what about eighty thousand dollars? Repairs and maintenance are going up by ninety thousand dollars. Asseline and oil has went up by twenty-five thousand dollars. Repair maintenance vehicles have gone up by forty thousand dollars. D T E streetlights have gone up by thirty thousand dollars.
That's not, that's not accurate. They haven't gone up. These things were budgeted for, for the entire year.
The, all of those costs are actually higher. As an example, the, the Edison one, I anticipated a four percent increase.
Okay.
They went up fifteen, they went up fifteen percent.
A head call. I want to clarify. These are all increases I'm looking at.
Yes, yes, they are.
So this is over the budget from last year that we approved.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Okay, Ms. Manica.
So back at the listing. Okay, so back to D T E, streetlights, thirty thousand dollars extra. Contractual services dumpster that went up by thirty thousand dollars. Floor heat, floor expenses are going up by thirty-six thousand dollars. I don't know what floor expenses.
That's, that's the insurance claim for the recreation center.
Okay.
That's the balance of that.
Okay, uh, active employees have gone up by sixteen thousand dollars. Compensation accesses have gone up by ten thousand dollars and that's going out to a Mr.
That's two thousand. That is two thousand.
Yeah, two thousand. Sorry about that, now, President. Uh, building, uh, city building stormwater has gone up by ten thousand dollars. Transfer out F I A building fund has gone up by forty thousand dollars. So that brings us to eight hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars over the original budget that we approved last year.
Correct.
That is a big jump, sir.
So actually, Ms. Ms. Manica, Ms. Manica, I'm going to acknowledge Ms. Manica, but what I just did is I took that entire amount and I divided it by twelve for an entire city, for an entire city that is two point nine square miles and about ten thousand people. That means to manage this entire city, we were only over budgeted about a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars a month. In the city that spends about three million dollars a month, we were up about a hundred and fifty-six thousand. For those of you who run a business, this is that small hairline fracture between three and seven percent increase. We didn't just go up by thirty, I had, you have to divide that out by the entire year. This is for a calendar year, twelve months. That means for a city that is managing twelve million dollars a year and ins and outs, we were only up by about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month. I think that's fantastic, Carl. Hats off to you to manage all of that and only be up a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month to be managing all of those funds. Congratulations. You did a fantastic job when you look at it like that. Forgive me, Ms. Manica. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't skew the picture so far to think that we're just over budget. That is a budget amendment for twelve months. So Ms. Manica, please.
You, you said it that way, so I was just going to say it this way, and that is it says, or you're saying over the budget, but if I'm interpretive, it's correct. So I started out and I said, I'm only going to spend two thousand dollars on my vacations here. But lo and behold, by the time I went to take the vacation, the price of the car went up, the price, uh, the hotel went up, so that they need to spend more money on that particular vacation that I had already put. That's the same kind of scenario.
Yes.
So if we had new employees, our health insurance went up.
Yeah, so a couple of these were new employee came in. The other one was, uh, opt out and the new one that came in got insurance. So we had to adjust that.
So new employees came in and so of course we got to pay for those people, you know, we have to give them help. Uh, we have new projects that are being done since by M C A. So that's a cost. Yeah, but what we have done is balance that out, is get have the money to make this happen.
Yeah, so part of, again, the issue with not coming before you as frequent as you should be, right? But, but we, I monitor the income tax. But, but we, I monitor the income tax collections. So on a quarterly basis, I go, hey, we're running ahead. So like when the police contract came before you and those raises were given, there was no budget amendment at that time. That's incorporated in here as well. But, so I, when, I monitor the revenues and say, here's where we're at or whatever. And then, again, we finance informs the mayor as far as, hey, you know, i- if, if it was negative, we'd be screaming, hey, we can't do this, we can't do this. And remember, the budget, when I put it together, it's not 100% of what we need. It's really based on the estimated revenue that we have. And, and so some of the things are very conservative, you know, it's like, we budgeted zero for lawsuit settlements. We budgeted low for attorneys because I, if you look at last year's budget, that's all the revenues we had. You know, so some of this was very conservative, like the repairs and maintenance on vehicles. We, we've incurred a lot. You see two or three of those are there. We're probably up 100,000 dollars on repair costs. But again, our DPW, our Public Safety Department, they have to have their vehicles repaired. And the budgets were there, were not, you know, they didn't go up from last year, where all of the costs went up, you know, those kind of things. So that's part of this adjustment there. It's a conservative budget based on revenues, just like the budget you'll have the next item we have here. Again, it's, these are the revenues we think we're going to get, and every dime of it's going to be reinvested back in the city.
So what I want to say is, I agree, and we should have quarterly, so maybe we will talk about that later, have a quarterly report.
I will ensure you do, yes.
Um, this conversation, everybody knowing exactly how it's going to spend, or if, like you said, hey, let's not spend that much in that year. Let's do something new. Uh, sometime, when we try to explain, to not always explain, a bigger problem. But I get it. I, I just wanted to put it in a different term, different, different understanding. Uh, because we didn't know how much we were going to pay out in lawsuits until we finished them. So you can't, you almost can't budget them.
Yeah, and at the end of last year, there was no money to budget for them, yeah.
So that's, I just wanted to kind of make that point there, that some of it didn't know. So I went to, to my council that this is passed, and then we go forward. We're putting those new things in place by having a quarterly, uh, you coming before support. That's mine.
Yeah, again, the purpose of this is, is just to get us compliant, because like you said, it's done. You know, this, this has been incurred. If I'm before you quarterly, at least you have the opportunity to react. To, to, you know, I could tell you got 100 grand more, and you could opt not to amend the budget to, to spend it other places. Or at that point, I tell you, hey, it looks like repair maintenance are running a little high, or we hired this new person who now gets insurance and doesn't, blah, blah, blah. And we could have a more thorough discussion as far as how you want to, yeah, how you guys want to do that. Uh, again, the mayor runs the city, dictates that stuff, but again, it's all pending your approval. You know, so, so that's what we'll bring it for you of, of this is what we're proposing. And again, you'll have quarterly input on if you approve or don't approve of it. Like I said, the last three years, unfortunately, we've just come at this time to clean it up to make sure that, you know, our auto report looks good.
Okay, prepare to call for the vote. Madam Deputy Kirk, would you please for item 9A, a resolution to amend the operating budget as presented by the Finance Department, Mary Linda McDonald, for fiscal year 2324, it was, motion was made by Councilwoman Manica, supported by the Chair, would you please call to roll?
Councilwoman Shafi?
No.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
No.
Council President Thomas?
Yes. So that means, so Carl, what I need to find out from you is, now that we don't have this amendment approved, what does that mean for us? What jeopardy do we face now with the state of Michigan?
Well, it'll be disclosed in the auto report that we have violated the Budget Act. And each department that's over, it will be listed, department by department in the auto report.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to item 9B, the resolution to approve the proposed budget for the period of July 1, 2024, uh, to June 30, 2025, as prepared by Mayor Linda McDonald. City Council, what is your pleasure?
I move to approve the proposed budget for the period 2024, I'm sorry, July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025.
Chair Office, second, we have a motion on the floor to resolution to approve a proposed budget for July 1, 2024 to June 30th, 2025, as presented by Mayor Linda McDonald. Questions, concerns?
Carl? Um, what happens if we just approve?
So again, the same Budget Act that we're referring to, the state of Michigan requires that all municipalities adopt the budget by July 1st, or you need to shut down. Because if you don't appropriate money for spending, you can't legally spend.
So, so, I don't think, uh, the, uh, the ACO, legal deal?
Yes, because the GLEWA deal says that you will pass an annual budget and adjust the rates accordingly in that budget.
So Carl, there's so much you need to do with this unanswered issue. I apologize, everybody, that I was not here Friday. I was running a fever, I'm 104, I'm still, I'm still at a fever of 99 right now, so I'm very sick here, okay? Uh, so I apologize for not being here, but I'm really not helping with this budget. But at the same time, I can't afford to allow, uh, the, uh, ACO legal deal to fall short. And I can't allow residents to be without service. So.
And Commissioner too, again, it's, it's passing it, and then we can meet any, as much as we need to afterwards. It's just a matter of having one in place. And then, you know, it doesn't mean the discussion's over. We can have, we can have lots of.
I can tell you that the discussion on this budget is far from.
That's why I'm here. I'm ready.
It's far from.
Absolutely.
Are you a back, Captain President?
Uh, I'm going to call for the vote on item. Go right ahead, ma'am.
So, Mr. Carl Donovan?
Yes, ma'am.
We just call for automatic audit.
If what? No, um, my only experience with an audit not, or a budget not being passed was at Hamtramck when I was there. Uh, the state said you have 30 days to pass one, otherwise we're taking you over, and that's why they got taken over by the emergency manager. And so we are currently still under, under the thumb of the state, so I don't think it would take that long. I think if we didn't pass something by June 30.
Where is that?
Oh, it's in Lansing. Oh.
So I'm ready to call. You have any, anything else? Let's call for the vote on item 9B.
Councilman?
It's a resolution to approve the proposed budget for a period of July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025. Please, if you would.
Councilwoman Shafi?
For now, I won't say yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
No.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much, Carl.
Thank you, yes.
On to item 10, this is the Treasurer's Office, the resolution to approve the three-year assessment contract with WCA assessing. City Council, what is your, one, just before we get started, can someone please provide me a thorough explanation, if you wouldn't mind, Miss McDonald, just to let the people know what WCA stands for?
Uh, WCA stands for Wayne County Assessors.
Thank you very much. Okay, so City Council, what is your pleasure? On item 10, resolution to approve the three-year assessment contract with the Wayne County Assessors.
I move to approve the resolution to assess the contract with WCA Wayne County Assessor.
Chair Office, second. Questions, concerns?
Uh, Charlie?
I do not believe, this is just to approve the contract. Mr. Shaw is not here. Okay. He was, yeah, he was here for the previous meeting.
Okay, okay, so is this contract specifically for Doug Shaw or are they looking at, yeah, here's the name right here, Doug Shaw.
He is the owner of the agency.
Okay, yeah, I, I bought that. Okay. So, Carl, if, I think since you're here, I know that you can ask this question, but.
Do my best.
What happens if we don't approve?
You must have a, an assessor on record, uh, per the state. Uh, otherwise, again, or drill.
Okay, so if we don't approve it, does that mean the state's going to send us somebody else?
Uh, no, I don't. I haven't been through the ramifications of this one. But we are, you're required to have a level four assessor at all times on your role. Now, to, to sign the roles and sign the assessments and set up, especially now with the tax, you know, the tax bills going out July 1.
So nobody can tell me what the possible liability of the city, Attorney, can you tell me?
Uh, if, if you don't have an assessment, if you don't have an assessor, you can't make, you can't send out taxes. Uh, I would imagine it would be significant, but I can't really tell you particularly. I, I wouldn't imagine a scenario where you wouldn't have an assessor. It's required by law.
You, you can't, yeah, you can't.
Council President, I, I can, I can address that to a Mr. Shafi. If we do not have a county, if we don't have assessor, that means that we could, the tax role cannot be assessed and that we cannot send out tax, uh, bills to the citizens because we have to have a correct assessment from the city. And if that doesn't happen, then there's no tax bills. No tax bills means no revenue. No revenue means no operations. No operations mean, again, we don't have funds.
So, um, is there a attorney?
Yes, Councilman.
So, um, I did fact, and this is a serious issue. Okay, but, um, I had a lot of concern, questions about the way the city assesses property taxes here, quite a lot of that. I mean, I'm trying to go back about 20 years, and Mr. Shaw is still here for just that long, you know? It would have been nice if he was here to speak on his bad end. Um, there were way, there were way that, Miss Manica, if we could table this item until Mr. Shaw gets back, you know, talking to him uh, personally, if you were reconsidering that. If we could, uh, we could table this item, leave everything as it is until the next council meeting. And hopefully, you know, he will be back by then, and we can talk again in person.
Okay, so, hold on just a second. Let me look, I'm looking at the previous council meeting agenda here. And WCA was on a previous council.
He was brought up as a walk-on, but it was voted down.
Okay, so he came in as a walk-on, and then, so July 1st begins tax season.
Yes.
So that means we will be out of compliance as of July 1st. So we will be.
Yeah, that was my recommendation is.
30th of June, we are.
30 day, yeah, pass a 30 day contract or something like that, if you're going to do that.
All right.
Because again, you want to have an assessor on record as of July 1, or as to the mayor's point.
Okay, no, it's good, it's good. We got, we got people from the state and other places watching what we do here, so it's good. Let it go.
So. So, I don't mean to be rude, but, okay, Carl. You guys knew this timeline was coming up. Now, here the grumblings of the public, okay, I get that. You guys knew this timeline was coming up. You tried to walk it on at the last, last minute, you know how we feel about last minute. It doesn't give us time to assess, it doesn't give us time to bend things, it doesn't give us time to consider the information as before. That's why most council members hate walk-on, because it's the last minute. Again, we knew Doug Shaw's contract was coming up. I knew his contract was coming up at the start of the year, in January. I knew it was coming. So why did we wait until this particular month? This last month, the last two weeks? Even the last four weeks, okay? We go back as far as to the last council meeting when we tried to walk it on, which was unacceptable, okay? And I hear the public's grumbling. I hear the public's grumbling. I hear it, I hear it. But nothing should be waiting until the last minute of the deadline. And you want to say, if we don't approve this, that's our ass. I got a problem with those threats. Those are idle threats. Those are mild little threats that everybody loves to make in this city. Everybody loves to make, if we don't have this, this is going to happen. We don't have that, we can't do this, we don't have that, we can't do this. This city's been functioning for 100 years. It's 100 years of Hollywood. Why are we waiting to the last minute for crucial contracts like this? This is a crucial contract.
And I, and I. And I agree with you. I, I don't know the details behind why you didn't get.
And then on top of that, and then on top of that, Mr. Shaw is on vacation at Yellowstone with no one here to really answer to this, because you don't know that much about this yourself. But I'm just asking the question, why are we waiting to the last minute, and then you want to tell me, damn, if we do, and damn, if we out?
And again, that was, I'm just trying, you asked the question of, of what, of what if, again, I.
Oh, my head is shaking, I need to go home.
Yeah, yeah, again, the, the simplest thing, and I told, I understand, and I totally agree with all your points. It's not fair to you guys. So, because, because you didn't have it. So, again, the administration's going to have to do a better job of getting it to you timelier. Again, understand your frustration. He was here, again, for that walk-on meeting, but, uh, obviously it wasn't, it, it wasn't allowed to be walked on, and then he had a pre-scheduled vacation, is what he told us. Like I say, the.
He brought it to us last month, and we didn't, we didn't entertain it. We had a month advance, so now, because we didn't entertain, it was brought to us in a time, it was brought to us as it was made available. I know my birthday. I never go and renew my license before my birthday. I know what day my gun permit expires, I go on that day. I know what day my car insurance expires, I renew my car insurance on that day.
It was all done, he didn't walk on. He wanted us to approve it with 30 seconds of looking at.
He wants to discuss it.
That's what he was brought for.
It was brought to us to put on the agenda to discuss. We were not asked to approve anything. We're asked to put it on the agenda, discuss. We were not mature enough as adults who get things sent to us at our home.
Point of order, point of.
We were not mature enough to even bring it on the discussion. Point of order, recognized. I'm ready to call for the vote. Madam clerk?
You would have wanted us to vote on it that night. Look out the back, it would have been voted on.
We could have got some answers. Madam, Madam Protem, the floor is yours, Mr. Shafi, you have exhausted your time.
Oh, I have not exhausted my.
You have, you have two, you have two instances to speak, you have two instances to speak, and you have exhausted your time. Madam Protem?
I just want to say for the record, that our financial director is supposed to be our senior business. We have contracted out every job that belongs to us, in the city of Ohio. And I'm just going to, you know, we go out, leave, go to my homes, and call, call, that way.
Okay, we'll call for the vote on item 10, please, resolution to approve the three-year assessment contract with WCA assessing. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call to roll?
Councilwoman Shafi?
I'm going to have the vote, don't.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carried. We are at the end of our business tonight. We're going to move over into citizens' participation. I had this, you had your hand, Ms. Manica?
I did, and I just wanted to find out, this is a question for Carl, what he did, on the one that we did not pass, to amend the operating budget?
Yes.
What is the, can, what is the?
You, you have until June 30 to pass an amendment, if you like. That, that's the date. After June 30, you can't amend this year's budget.
If we don't amend it, if we don't do this, we've already, we're already in here. What is that possible?
Again, the, the violation goes to the state of Michigan, then it's up to them at that point. So it'll be disclosed in the auto report. Like, if you look at our auto report, like, for last year, it says, e- e- all the departments were compliant. And so this year, it'll say, we're in non-compliance for all of those departments that are over budget.
Good, that's good, let them see it.
That, that, it should, it needs to come back.
So.
Because, we have too much on the line in the state requirements. The state assisted us in everything that we have done, we did. And we do not need to underestimate what could happen by, by being in violation. We don't want to do that, because it's just like shutting down the budget. We can't pay fleet.
If we don't amend this budget.
We have income coming in, finance. Am I wrong, Carl? We can't pay, we don't have it.
Well, again, this, this is, this is, did we properly appropriate what's going to be in our budget? And if that amendment's passed, then it shows that everything was properly appropriated and came before you and you approved it. If not, then it shows that expenditures were. If not, then it shows that expenditures were incurred, and we're over, we violated the budget.
And the things we need to rectify, probably that next year.
Yeah, okay, so, so let me, let me, let me just squeeze right here, because we're about to go into citizens' participation, no, that was a.
I did not amend the water.
She pulled a coat tail to ask the question, we're gonna go into citizens' participation, and then during council affairs, you can address whatever you wanted. That's why I don't like to shoehorn things on at the end, because it gets, we'll, we'll, we'll be here for another thirty-five minutes. It's okay, it's okay, it's okay. We're gonna move into citizens' participation, I had my watch set for four minutes, because I figured the room was small, I'm not doing that. I've been up since four-thirty, okay, I value your time and I value my time. And it's, and it's ninety-eight degrees outside, so I thought we could get this thing done and keep it moving, I'm sorry, eighty-nine degrees. But it's citizens' participation, so I'm gonna open it up for two minutes, Miss Petty, always good to see you, I'm gonna let you state your name and I'm gonna hit the button.
Uh, Demond Petty with the Juneteenth Detroit Outreach, uh, I am here for our final heads-up. Uh, the five K and the parade will be happening Wednesday, June nineteenth, starting on Manchester. Yes, uh, we finalized our route with the fire department, but we have not been able to, uh, get in touch with the police chief. So I'll be walking that in, uh, tomorrow and leaving it for him, but everything else is a go, we have about sixty-five runners and walkers for the open route. And the parade is gonna be a considerable size, so, we appreciate all the help that you have given us, and, uh, it's gonna be a great day, I hope you all can see it.
Thank you, sir, I'll see you there.
It will end at, uh, Hamilton and. Hamilton, yes, ma'am.
You have the same scenario?
No, is it, the, the parade will end there, yeah. Is it, thank you.
All right, I have citizens online, let me do this, I have people that are online. And one of the issues that we've had in the past is that there were people online who wanted to get their hand raised. And so I am going through the list of people that are online, I see one hand from a citizen that lives over on. In the quiet, Ms. McDonald, you're coming on as a citizen, after you, I see Ms. Chris, or Ms. Bird, I'll recognize you next, okay? I'll let you know when it's time to unmute, go ahead, Ms. McDonald.
Okay, um, I just wanted to address the, uh, amendments to the budget. Uh, again. When you receive a budget, and we have not had to come to amend a budget this year, at all, because we were within compliance. When you present a budget, you're presenting a proposed budget, budget. Proposed means what you think we're going to take in, that's what proposed means. We're proposing it, we're, we're believing that this is what we're gonna get. But sometimes that does not happen, sometimes we have an overage of what we thought was going to happen, happen. So at this time, the budget was proposed, and once we got to the point, we had a new director come in for, um, uh, example. We had a new, uh, uh, DPW director come in. Okay, we did not use any funds over that, because those, but that was, that money was from a, someone who retired. So we used the money from the re, uh, person that retired to hire the, uh, DPW director, didn't go over. Same thing in other departments, when we hired DPW workers, we hired DPW workers who left, from, who, who, some left. And we replaced them with the exact, exact amount that they were receiving, with no benefits. So there are people who came in, there's people who decided, that was full-time, decided, they want benefits now. Instead of exact, uh, being, um, what is it, opt-out. So if they're full-time, they're entitled to benefits. They're entitled, just like you all receive benefits, you're entitled. Or you can opt-out, it's up to you. So those things happen, interchangeable, some people decide, oh, I don't want them, and then later on, they come back and say, I do. So that's ten thousand dollars, ru- roughly, and about per person, who now we have to include. So yes, when a budget is amended, it's because we have either, uh, had to have some extra expenditures, and let's talk about it. Materials. How many of you had, I'm, I know my time is up, Council President, how, how many, how many of you have re, uh, tried to, uh, do your, repair your house? If you've tried to do repairs this ye- since twenty-twenty, it has doubled. Gas has doubled, everything, the price of stuff has doubled, or tripled since then. So that's inflation, so we have to adjust for inflation, and if you can't understand that, then I'm sorry, I apologize that you feel that this is something that has occurred. But this is how a budget runs at, 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 at the end of the year or in the year. You have to amend, there's amendments to be made, thank God we didn't have to make any amendments during the year, because we were on top, uh, of the budget, we were in compliance. And every one of my administration, uh, administrators will tell you, I told them, we are not going over budget. And talking about lawsuits, the lawsuits, the frivolous lawsuits that we have to pay out continuously. We have a few that just came in, those lawsuits cost us money, if we have to get a specialist to, doesn't, from somebody, they have to, uh, uh. They have to contract it out to somebody else, to make sure that it's done for a conflict of interest or something, those lawsuits cost us money. So every time we receive a lawsuit, the city has to pay for that. And they're gonna continue to add up, so we can keep sending in these, allowing people to do these frivolous lawsuits. And we have to keep paying for them, that's all I have to say, Council President, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am, um. It's hard, you can't, you can't, you can't pull the time card on the mayor, you know, I'm sorry, I haven't wanted to, but. Go ahead, Ms. Frye.
Okay, I wanted to piggyback off a little bit of what she said about, um, um, the lawsuit. And, cause I kinda wrote down, he said like eight hundred thousand dollars, but, um, the insurance paid back five hundred seventy-five thousand. So it must be some kind of clause there, and also I was thinking, um, when these budget items happen, don't they come to council? Um, do any of this information have to come to councils to be approved? Um, or they just do it on that, on their own? And so that seems like that's a problem right there. Um. Also, uh, back to Mr. Damon in that Waterville June, it was the cutoff time, in this June, so we're going to end the June, so what we're gonna do?
No, sir.
Well, why not, this the end?
Yeah, I mean, so what I, when, having an opportunity to, Ms. Frye, I'm gonna stop the clock on you, cause, so listen. Go to other cities, city council meetings.
I don't wanna hear that, I just want to hear.
No, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying, you, so that means the two of you guys need to get together.
No, it's just a city situation here.
Ma'am, I'm just about to say to you, I go to other city council meetings, I go to other city council, and Ms. Frye, please.
No, you please, this has nothing to do.
So then you and Mr. Garrett should go and have a private conversation, ma'am, thank you so much.
Information.
I hear you, but this is, you get two minutes, and the person after you gets two minutes, and then one of us can answer that question, so thank you very much, Mr. Garrett. Mr. Garrett, uh, during council, during council affairs, if one of these individuals wanna ask you to answer her question, we can. We can. When I used to go to your establishment, I always followed the rules of your establishment, ma'am, sure did.
Good evening, Council, my name is Jamil Edwards, I wanted to, I live on Grand, I wanted to ask one question. If, uh, if people are coming into the city, and I'm going to use Juneteenth, and they use Manchester, which is a private lot. How does a city tax the vendors on a private lot? Because he initially was gonna start at Glory Market, he was going to continue to stay at Glory Market. The city is charging each vendor that's on private property a hundred and fifty dollars. And when he came up here, he said, some of them, one is a little girl that's just selling lemonade. But you're gonna charge her a hundred and fifty dollars to be on private property, so my question to you, or to the mayor. How does a city charge a vendor on private property, and where is it in the charter?
Thank you, ma'am, I'm gonna pose that question up to you, Madam Mayor, I have one question to support that, do you pay for a vendor license?
Let me ask her.
Hold on, no, hold on a second, I wanna ask a question, do you buy a vendor license? To vend in the city in general, or do you buy a vending license for a location?
The vendoring license is for an event, we have an event ordinance, so those vendors are under that event ordinance. Any, any event in this city, whether it's on private property or in a city property, is subject to that ordinance. Just like in all the other cities, Detroit, everywhere else, they have a vendoring ordinance. And, and that ordinance, which was created in between two thousand and sixteen up to, I, I think it was, I wasn't on it, our council when they finished it. But I wanna say twenty, twenty something like that, the ordinance was amended to have vendoring, uh, in it. And those vendors, in order to vendor in the city of Highland Park, there's two different kinds, there's a e, event vendoring. And then there's the permanent vendors, like food trucks, carts, uh, we have those also. In the city, because locations in the city where those vendors are, so this ordinance. There is an ordinance, uh, that can be looked at, Ms. Edwards, if you would like to see the ordinance, please let me know. And I will make, I'm, I'm sorry, I can't, did she say she will?
Yes, ma'am, she says she'll follow up with you so that she could see it.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, I don't see any other citizens at the podium, so I'm gonna move into citi- to council affairs, starting with the councilman from the third district.
Good evening, everybody. So, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. If you recall the budget from last year, when we went over the budget last year. We didn't have to make any amendments. When we first got in the office, two thousand twenty-three, we came in the budget seats a couple of months afterwards, correct? Did you see any amendments for that year? No. Okay, we didn't make any budget, budget amendments last year, so why are we making them now? Why are we spending over money in which we did not have approval to spend in the first place, I understand that stuff happens, I get it, I get it, expenses happen. But council should be notified of those changes, it should be notified of those expenses, and it shouldn't just be you doing as you see fit with our money. We don't get to do as we see fit with your money, nobody should have that right and that curse, they need to let you know what they're spending your money on before they spend. And it had ample time to notify us of changes, they admitted it themselves. And these were changes that happened throughout the year, so why was the council notified? That's all I'm simply saying, I'm not holding anybody's feet over the flame, I'm just asking a simple question. That, uh, that the administration notifies this body in a timely fashion, so that we can be properly informed to make a fair and just decision. I'm not asking any more than that, and you have a lovely evening, residents, I'm done.
Thank you.
Duly noted, duly noted, Council Press, uh, Councilman, we duly noted, we will make sure that that happens.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Manica.
I have an announcement from, I'm sorry, good evening, everyone, how you guys doing? Uh, I have an announcement from Highland Park N W A C P, they have reactivated in the city of Highland Park. And so they are celebrating that Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, at Ten Pickens. Um, they'll be celebrating that, and I did not give you a time, let me see what time that says, yeah, I apologize, that is. Um, at five thirty P M, so again, they are celebrating at Earnesty Ford Rec Center, they're celebrating the reactivation of N W A C P. They're encouraging, of course, for you to come out, uh, if you see their flyer, and I will have it posted on my page, there's a scan for it. Um, there's also numbers that you can contact them, you wanna be a member, and you as well, you as well, so come out and support them in that. Uh, remember again, that this is gonna be very hot, um, this week, we get that a lot, think of the seniors, so I'm asking also, if there's anyone in the audience today. That is in District One, uh, please see me right after the meeting, um, well, actually, so, see me after the meeting. Uh, the other thing I wanna say, and this is to everyone, and to definitely myself and my council members. We have been here now a year or whatever, we cannot right all the wrongs that have happened in the past. At some point, we gotta move on and move in a way that we are correcting without going back. We just gotta make sure we're doing what we need to do upfront, so that it doesn't happen again, and also learn what we don't know. Cause a lot of things earlier, you seen, I said, I didn't know, so I don't know what I don't know, so I need to ask. But if there's ways that we can correct them going forward without hurting ourselves, without putting ourselves in a deeper hole, we need to figure out a way to do that. And to rectify situations before they come all out in the public. I am at the point that this is just beyond me, that we can't handle things unless we just put it in front of everybody on TV, or whatever we are. Internet, social media, I should be able to sit down with certain entities and say, these are the things that need to be corrected. And then if you don't correct them and you come before us, then I guess it should be out here, but we have displayed enough discord, enough, uh, ignorance, enough, uh. Just dislike, I go a number of places, including in Highland Park. And we don't have to like each other, but we have to do the work, and at some point, we gotta sit down and do the work. And not worry about our dislike, as long as we can service the entire whole, but sometime I feel like. In order to get back at the other person or something that has happened, we're hurting ourselves, cutting off our nose to spite our face. Because I need to show you that I'm gonna get you, I need to show you that you was wrong. Well, I can show you that you was wrong by creating a way for us to do it right. By learning how to do it the correct way. Or at least, if we're gonna make a mistake, let's make a mistake together and say, oh, we should have did it that way, let's do it again. Carol brought us an excellent example today, he said, I'm willing to come before you for it. That is the first step for us to create those situations where we don't have a budget situation, it's always gonna be amended. And so I'm not positive, so I'm not gonna dispute my, my council member, Shafi, on that we didn't have an amendment fracture, cause I'm thinking.
We did.
I'm pretty sure we did, it's usually always an amendment, because there's some unexpected thing, it just might not have been big. I'm not going to dispute, because I don't have the date, time, etc. in front of me, but if I'm correct. In most businesses, in most places, period, that have a budget, there is some amendments made, because you have some unexpected costs. That happens, and you may have to move somebody around to take care of it. So, but with that, again, being said, that goes back to us learning. And so I guess this is my plea at this point, halfway through the year. That we have got to do that, we have got to put all animosity aside when it comes down to do a work for the city. And, and give answers, no, I agree, they should not come to us, so you already know I agree with that, in despair mode, but sometime it does happen. The other thing that I'm asking is that. We're allowed to catch up, and I feel like in our efforts to move forward. No disrespect to administration, Mayor C E D, or to council, in our effort to move forward. We are moving sometime too fast and not thinking, we're not getting, we're, we're not doing the right research, and we're not listening to the right people. And so at some point, we have to stop. And we think this, we're halfway through this second year, let's do something different. I don't have much more other than. I don't have much more other than, again, remember the NWAACP. Oh, the dinners. That's what I kept trying to think about. The dinners is also going to be at, uh, the rec center. Don't fly with me. We need some people need to go to dinners. Y'all know that. Uh, it's free from Detroit Mercy. And it will be at the rec center. I'm trying to give you the dates. Um, actually, Pro Tem, you go ahead and I'll just shoot it to, uh, Mr. Thomas and he can get it out.
Good evening, citizens of Highland Park. I don't know what we had to say and stuff for. We have to keep praying. I pray a lot in this way. And, um, I get my packets on Wednesday or Thursday before each council meeting. And you call me and you sit down and go. I'll say a head from there. Have a good night.
Okay. So thank you very much, Ms. Manica. I'm gonna piggyback on Ms. Manica before I even get into my own. It's on June 17th to the 21st at the Highland Park Community Center at Tame Pickett. Please have your young people come out and adults as well. Uh, your oral hygiene can be an indicator of other illnesses, so it's a good idea to get checked out every year. So let me just jump in here and start by saying, um, I did not anticipate being city council president. I had no intention at all. I wanted to participate. I watched people that live in our community be involved in government. And I thought, how can I sit there with capacity and not participate? A lot of people talk a lot of stuff, but they don't put their name on a piece of paper. And so I thought, you know, put up a shut up. Let me put my name on a piece of paper. And I ended up being city council president. I still do not know how that actually occurred. I have hypotheses. I had a little investigation done, but I still cannot tell you honestly how that happened. As a result, I am here because I assume the creator wanted me here because I didn't make plans to do this. I did not make plans to do this. To Ms. Manica's point about us working together, here's the issue that I have with that notion. I am committed to doing things correctly. I'm committed to being honest. I'm committed to not being duplicitous. I can say for a great deal of certainty that when I have a conversation with Ms. Manica about things related to city council, she is acting from her own personal experience and motivation. She is not going to a committee and have people tell her what to do. I know that what she's doing is she's doing it for the benefit of the people who live in this city because she's lived here for a long time. Nobody is paying her or incentivizing her. Nobody told her, I'm gonna hook you up if you do something that's counterproductive. As a result, the things that she talks about and the things that she does in that chair as my councilperson reflect the fact that she's acting in good faith. And so I will not, at any time, after opening both my palms up on the first day in this job, deal with people who do not act in good faith and who are puppets to other people. In fact, I will attack and persecute those people for being dishonest to the fullest of my capability. And that is why I have taken the stance to share with you all of the activities that happen in the background of city council, or else you would have no idea what's going on here. This, this meeting that happens twice a month is so contentious because there are a lot of duplicitous nefarious activities going on behind closed doors every single month. And emails that happen on the city website will be shared with the public. Things that happen that are outside of the guidelines of the law will be shared with the public. This is your money. And mind you, I want to make it clear, those members of city council, we are not compensated for our work, okay? We're provided a stipend. The young people that work at Popeyes make more than we do. I'm just being honest with you, okay? The, Madam Pro Tem and I are the highest paid people here, okay? We get about $700 a month. And that's for a part-time work. That's 20 hours a week. That's 80 hours a month. Okay? So you, I could make more money if I was collecting bottles at Belle Isle than what, put the same amount of time. So I don't want you to think that we're being paid. So people are here being paid by their conscience or they're being incentivized by somebody else. But the people that are here working are doing it for whatever, for various reasons. I'm doing it because I live here. My family here. I raise all of my children here. My children are polar bears, HP for life. They don't know other city. When they leave, they come home in the airport, where you going? I'm going to Highland Park. This is their home, okay? I am not a fraud. I am authentic. I raise my babies here. That is why I conduct myself the way that I do. I wish Ms. Frye had not left because during council affairs, I was going to allow Mr. Garrett to answer her question about the bill. But Mr. Garrett can do that at another time. So we had no experience last year approving a budget, and the budget was amended. And the budget that we were amending came out of the previous administration, out of the YAP administration. And they didn't know until the very end of that term what the amendments were going to be. And so we had to, what the expenditures were going to be, and so we had to make an amendment. Everybody renews their cell phone contract, not three months in advance when it comes due. You renew your driver's license, not three months in advance, but when it comes due. Your car insurance, your house insurance, you get a notice within 30 days of the end of that term, and they say, madam, sir, please renew. Very rarely, ever, at all, under any circumstances in this country, the United States of America, do you find people that go in six months in advance to amend the contract. It almost never happens. In fact, in the automotive world and in the school system, the contracts expire before the teachers' union and the UAW go back to make an additional contract. That is absolutely not the norm at all, anywhere, ever in the country the dollars live in. So you typically do that in the 11th hour. When a basketball player's contract ends, what do they do? They go into free agency. They parade around and then they get a new contract. That is normal. So to try to make it seem as if something nefarious is happening here after three or four budget meetings, to make it seem as if something untoward here, that is changing the narrative. That is pathological and it is flat out lying. And I will not sit by and allow the narrative to be twisted. It's a big fat lie. And so that's part of the reason why, unfortunately, to my colleagues' distress, we have not been able to move forward. We have not been able to have those type of meetings. Because I am not playing cards with somebody who got a deck under the table. Won't happen. So with that, all business related to the city. Oh, wait a minute. Hold on a second. Ms. Christina Bird, I am going to allow you to talk because you were on here. You raised your hand and we moved up, Ms. Bird. Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. You, you get the last word on tonight's city council meeting. In my council affairs, if you, go ahead. I'm gonna give you your two minutes, too.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to address my concerns with, um, Councilman Ashafi. Um, the level of disrespect that you give citizens when they ask you simple questions, city-related, council meeting-related, you, you're very disrespectful. Um, I mean, I, it's just, it's embarrassing, you know, the way you act. So that's just what I wanted to address. So that's it.
Okay. And so thank you very much. I'm gonna mute you. So all the people online, if you're still listening, please raise your hand early in the meeting when it's time for citizens' comments. It'll make it easier for me to recognize you. We, we, we're managing a digital platform. Having concluded all business related to the city of Highland Park, at 9:21 PM, the chair would declare the meeting adjourned.